So good evening, everyone. My name is Noreen Johnson Smith and I'm your Charlton Town Moderator. It's my pleasure to join you this evening and I'm thrilled to be here with Andrew Bolas, our town administrator, Bill Borowski, an elected official in town who serves on the Board of Selectmen. And I don't know if other selectmen are with us tonight, but they may also be watching and these are all members who are involved in preparing for and the successful completion of town meeting. So I'm going to start with a little presentation on the background of New England Town Meeting. This won't be that long, so don't get put off. I'm not going to read the slides. I'm going to highlight them for you and we're going to move through them rather quickly and then have time for a Q and A at the end. And if you want to go back and read the slides in more depth or review anything, this recording will be available on Facebook and YouTube and on off of the Charlton YouTube channel. So I'm going to share my screen now. And I'm going to run the slideshow from the beginning. And so this is an introduction to Charlton Town Meeting. Andrew is my side panel in the way. Can you see it on the screen share or no?
You should be outside.
All right, I'm going to move you over here. So this conversation tonight I'm calling Democracy and Community in Action because at the heart of our democracy is our local ability to make decisions about things that impact our lives. And you do that by voting at town meeting and you do it together as a community, voting together in conversation with one another. And that is the purpose of town meeting. It's not about issuing ballots and expediting decision making. It is about deliberation and opportunity to hear from each other and to discuss issues of importance that require votes and decisions. And so you'll see the picture here. If you come to town meeting next week on November 15th at 7:00 PM, you will be greeted by the Charlton Town Crier outside the meeting hall at Charlton Middle School. So please feel free to come, take a picture with Cedric Flowers, who is also serves on our Housing Authority. Cedric has graciously agreed to come out in costume and greet us at the town meeting. So it should be a lot of fun. So the Charlton Town Meetings are governed by three different sets of laws or rules. Can anyone name them? What are the three different sets of laws or rules that govern our meetings? Do we have any answers, Andrew? Any takers?
Looking in the chat right now, I don't see anybody posted in the chat.
I'm going to keep moving and give you the big reveal.
Yeah, open meeting rules is a question whether or not.
Okay, I love that though, because open meeting law does not apply to town meeting. So we can come back to that afterwards, but there are three different authorities that govern how our town meetings are run. The first is Massachusetts General Law. Most of the laws pertaining to town meeting fall under Chapter 39 Municipal Government. The second document, which is cross-referenced in Mass. General Law are our town bylaws. Those serve as our legislation, our laws that govern our town and they refer back to Mass. General Law. So that yellow arrow shows that there's a two-way reference. Mass. General Law supersedes Charlton Bylaws, but Charlton Bylaws add more detail and rely on the Mass. General Law to define how our meetings are run. Charlton Bylaws also referred to a third document called Town Meeting Time. This is a handbook of parliamentary law and it is the rules that govern the procedures used in town meeting. So those are the three sources of laws and rules that govern our meetings. Town meeting is excluded from open meeting law per Mass. General Law. It's fascinating. It's a little nuanced, but the meeting itself is open, but it's not subject to open meeting rules. In other words, there are bodies that can be present at the meeting in conversation and deliberation, such as the Board of Selectmen and the fact that they are having a conversation about the issues being discussed at town meeting does not, is not governed by open meeting law. I'm going to continue. So a little fun fact. In Mass. General Law, so you'll see on the left, these blue boxes going to refer to Mass. General Law. Every time I have an orange box, it's Charlton Bylaws and the green box is Town Meeting Time. Mass. General Law, Part One, Title II, Chapter Six outlines Town Meeting Day. And this is every year on October 8th to commemorate the first town meeting. Does anyone know where the first town meeting was held on October 8th? Andrew, any respondents out there who are taking a gander at? When was the first town meeting held?
Not seeing any, any guess. Oh, here we go. McKinstry's house.
Oh McIntyre's house. Thank you.
Sorry.
I saw that in the chat just now and that's true for Charlton, for the town of Charlton. But that is not the October 8th commemoration that the state celebrates. As you might guess. Whoops. Of course I froze. That doesn't help. All right. As you might guess, it was Plymouth. So Dorchester claims they established the first town meeting form of government when they passed an order in 1633. But Plymouth held the actual first town meeting to distribute land among the settlers. And in 1635, the General Court for the state authorized all towns to be able to dispose of property through town meetings. So hats off to Plymouth Plantation. Those meetings got raucous is the definition. So people were disorderly. Business took forever. Sometimes it couldn't get done. People arguing. And so in 1715, the Mass. General Court passed a law, you had to have an elected town moderator to run your meeting. So the town moderator, our role is actually outlined in Mass. General Law. It's also outlined in the Charlton Bylaws and it's guided by Town Meeting Time. So in Mass. General Law, the annual meeting, which is our town meeting, shall be held every year in either February, March, April, May, or June. So the business of the town has to be completed by June 30th unless there's an emergency. So they did make accommodations for COVID last year. Town meeting must be held within the geographic limits of the town unless, as we did last year, we went to Dudley and we used the auditorium because of COVID. So there were some restrictions that were lifted from Mass. General Law to accommodate our COVID epidemic. And the town, the state law allows the town to designate what time the meeting will be called. And so you'll see that corresponds directly to Section One of the Town of Charlton Bylaws under Chapter 15 Town Meetings. Our meetings are held on the first Saturday in May. That's elections, eight to eight. And then we reconvene on the third Monday in May at 7:00 PM. There's been some discussion about whether or not this time actually yields the greatest number of voters. And so we will be re-looking at that this year and taking input from all of you about when is the most convenient time for a town meeting. There are other communities that meet on the weekends on a Saturday at noon time or Saturday in the afternoon. There are communities that meet at Sunday at noon time. So we do have other options if a daytime meeting is potentially brings out more voters. Mass. General Law requires that we issue a warrant. So when I hear the word warrant, I think of the Wild West and somebody with a hammer and a piece of paper putting up a picture of a criminal that's a warrant for somebody's arrest. And it's very similar. The warrant for town meeting has to be hung in public locations to announce the meeting to the voters. And so that's per Mass. General Law. The selectmen are responsible for organizing the warrant, which is the list of the agenda items that are going to be discussed and voted on at the meeting. And here at the bottom here in red, if you request in writing by 10 or more registered voters, you can ask for something to be inserted in the warrant of the annual town meeting. And for special town meetings, if you have 100 registered voters, you can ask for an agenda item to be placed on the warrant. The selectmen can also call a meeting on your behalf. So if you feel a meeting must be held, that there is a situation that must be dealt with and voted on by the town. If you have 200 registered voters who ask for a town meeting in writing, then the selectmen must hold the meeting no later than 45 days after you submit that request. So you have quite a bit of power of determining how meetings go forward, although the selectmen typically set the dates and times for the meeting. Per the Charlton Bylaws, we hang up copies of those warrants at the post office, at the library and in the town hall at least seven days before the annual meeting in the spring and at least two weeks before a special town meeting. I do want to highlight the red sentence at the bottom. No action is valid unless the subject matter is contained in the warrant. In other words, if it's not on the warrant as an agenda item, we are not discussing it in the meeting. And that is by bylaw and by Mass. General Law. Here's a little fun fact, just because we've talked a lot about our fire station and our needs in terms of preparing for fires. So just a little fun fact, one of your many powers as a voter, which was written into the laws of the state years and years ago. The selectmen, when appealed to in writing by seven people living in a district, may establish and organize a fire district and a fire department. And in this particular instance, if the selectmen don't proceed, a justice of the peace can actually file to hold the meeting. A town at town meeting also determines where its schools are located. So a couple of little fun facts. In order to recess or continue a town meeting, in other words, to end a meeting due to some emergency or because it's gone too late and then to get back together again at another time, the town moderator can consult with public safety officials in the event of an emergency and reschedule a meeting. And we would generally do that within a one-month timeframe so that the meeting's not delayed terribly. That's just a recent change in the law. And this I'm going to skip. This is just more about inclement weather, but I wanted you to know there is a part B of Chapter 39, Section 10A on recess. Charlton Town Bylaws speak to the conduct in the meetings. And so if you see here in town meetings, all persons shall be seated as far as practicable. In other words, if we have open seats, you will be asked to take a seat. And if you are making a motion in town meeting and it's not a motion that appears on the warrant, it should be submitted in writing to me during the meeting. So bring a pen and paper if you plan to make an amendment, a motion to amend or any other motion has to be submitted in writing. Under Mass. General Law, you cannot address the town meeting without coming through the moderator. In other words, you have to speak to me and be spoken to by me in order to address the full town meeting. At all times, people will be silent during the meeting unless they are called on by the moderator. So here's the, here's the combination of these two slides tells you to please sit down and please be quiet. That's the summary. When you've been recognized by the moderator, and that would be by coming up to the microphone at the appropriate time in the meeting when I call for comments for discussion, you would come to the microphone. I would say, please state your name and address to show me that you are a voter in the district and to put on record where you live. And then you would state your name and address and I would ask you for your comments and to keep them to three minutes. You can then speak only to the motion at hand, only to the issue that is being discussed within the article and the motion being made related to that issue. No one can speak at the town meeting unless we take a vote as a group to allow someone from outside the community to actually address the town meeting. So that requires a vote. Are there any questions so far?
Just pausing briefly. I don't see any questions posed in the chat.
Okay. I don't want to go too quickly, but Mass. General Law further outlines that the moderator receives the votes. So when you come to the meeting, you sign in, you register. Voters are seated in the main area of the meeting. Non-voters are allowed to attend the meeting, but they have to sit off to the side. And the moderator is responsible for counting the votes, announcing the result of the vote and keeping the meeting moving and focused and on track with the agenda or the warrant. In Charlton, the method of voting is defined through our parliamentary law, which is in a book called Town Meeting Time. That, you know, you're welcome to purchase one. You do not need to know everything in it. That is the job of the moderator to make sure that the meeting adheres to the proper procedure. You're welcome to read one. I gotta tell you, it's, it's a little slow, but if you're in it to win it, get yourself a copy through the Massachusetts Moderators Association. That outlines parliamentary law. If you do not like a vote, or if you would question a vote, the voters in the meeting have the opportunity to actually declare that they don't think that that vote was accurately calculated. This was more relevant when people were shouting or yelling yea or nay. We now have electronic voting and so it makes it very easy to count the votes and this, it renders this no longer really relevant, but you still have the right to question the vote. And the moderator is responsible for making sure that no one is excluded from the meeting. So we have to have facilities that accommodate all the voters. You have to make sure you have room to sit, that you have a clicker to vote with and that you are close enough to the conversation or in the adjacent room, the overflow room, that you have adequate ability to hear the conversation and to address the meeting as well. We cannot take away your right to hear what's going on, to understand the issues and to vote. So if there's ever any issue of accommodation, that needs to be brought to my attention immediately as a point of privilege. And I'll get to that in a moment. Furthermore, in the Charlton Bylaws, it outlines the moderator. It's a three-year elected term and it cross-references Town Meeting Time, which is our handbook of parliamentary law. Some people think about Robert's Rules of Order, which you might be familiar with in a business setting for running meetings. This is our version of Robert's Rules of Order and it's specific to town meeting.
Just before you move, sorry, before you move on, we did get a question in the chat whether or not tribal residents need to be registered to vote prior to county.
Yes. So in order to vote at town meeting, you have to be a registered voter in town. That's correct. And when you arrive at the meeting, you check in with the town clerk and the volunteers from her office, which will check you off on the list of registered voters. Just like when you go to an election and you go to vote, they have the list and they, you know, what district you live in in town and what your address is, they'll, they'll verify that at the entrance of town meeting. If you're not registered as a voter, I encourage you strongly to do so. And also if you're not registered, but you want to come to the town meeting to listen, you're welcome to come and listen. So you're also welcome to, to join the meeting, but I do encourage you to register to vote. And I think you'll see as this conversation goes on, how important it is to register to vote. The laws of our own community are in your hands. So whether you're at the meeting or not, we will be making decisions for you. So better to be a part of it. Charlton has an open meeting, so you'll often hear that term referred. So Town Meeting Time defines two types of meetings, open or representative. We have an open meeting. That does not mean that it is an open forum. That doesn't mean that anything can be discussed and everybody gets to talk. That's not what it means. It means that all voters are invited to attend and all voters are given a vote at the meeting. In other towns like Auburn, for example, they elect representatives who are town meeting members and those individuals take care of all the town business on behalf of the residents. We don't have that form of government. We have open town meeting. So before the meeting, the selectmen are working very hard before any meeting to assemble a warrant. And that is the, again, notice that needs to be posted, the annual town meeting. So the way you can remember it easy, here's my cheat sheet. ATM, it's like withdrawing money from the bank, right? So the annual town meeting is about the money. It's when we budget for the town for the coming year. We also appoint counsel if we need lawyers to defend the town against lawsuits. We can spend or appropriate money to cover bills that we couldn't cover last year. We can move money between accounts. We can approve loans or borrowing from the town. We can approve taxes. We approve major public projects, zoning changes and citizen petitions. But all of that work to put together that warrant with those complicated items starts early in the year. So every department in the town and every committee starts talking about their budget items and their proposal starting in February and they start presenting to the Board of Selectmen what their budget requests are. So if you want to learn more about the ATM, you can tune into any of those meetings in the spring to get more of a heads up before the meeting starts. Special town meeting happens in the fall and it's our second meeting of the year. The budget's already off and running and we do all the same things that we do at the annual town meeting, except we don't approve the budget. The budget's already been approved. We can still cover unpaid bills. We can move money between accounts. We can borrow tax, approve major public projects, zoning changes and citizen petitions. And so special town meetings are not less important than annual town meetings. They are just as important and have just as much weight and impact on the community. I encourage you to visit the town website before the meeting. Andrew does a great job of getting the warrant up on the website of making additional supportive materials available on the website so that you can kind of learn about the issues if you haven't had a chance to follow along with some of the committee meetings online. I know people are busy. Everybody works. And so if you can't tune in ahead of time and you feel like, oh no, I really shouldn't go because I haven't been paying attention, come anyway. It doesn't matter. Come to the meeting. We will make sure that you understand what you're voting on and your vote will count. So even though you have a busy life, if you can't manage all of it ahead of time, please don't have that be the reason that you don't come to the meeting. My advice is get there 15 minutes early, register, get a copy of the warrant and go find your seat. Some people start showing up a half hour early, say hello to neighbors, spread yourselves out because of COVID and wear a mask. Every agenda item that we're going to be covering is called an article and the moderator controls the meeting. So I will run it like a business meeting and we will make sure that we stay on topic and focused and that we make good decisions that include everyone. And that is the purpose of the meeting. Speed is not the purpose of the meeting. So sometimes town meeting time takes a little while and people get impatient. Bring a bottle of water and get a babysitter and come on out. We also have this year Shepherd Hill students who volunteered to help provide childcare during the meeting. So if you need those services at the meeting site at Charlton Middle School, please let us know. So when the meeting starts, I'll read the article and then ask for a motion. In other words, what is the action, the motion that the action we want from the voters? And the motion starts the conversation. Many of the motions are written up in advance in the warrant. And when you get to the meeting, you'll get a copy of the warrant with both the article and the motion. Articles and motions are separate items and the article will not be changed during the meeting. But the motion might change. So in other words, the issues we talk about are not going to change. Those are the articles. But the motion or the action that you take could be modified in the course of the meeting. So I'll ask for a motion. If sometimes to keep the meeting moving quickly, we'll just have the selectmen or others involved in preparing the warrant, read those motions that are pre-stated to help the meeting move along. And then I'll ask for a second. Someone in the audience can offer a second. And this doesn't mean you're voting to approve the motion. It means you agree that we should discuss the article. So we get a motion in a second and then I ask, is there anything to be said on this matter? And that's the opportunity for the public to come to the microphone, wait to be called on by the moderator, say your name, where you live in Charlton, and then you have three minutes to comment on the article and the motion. Sometimes it's important that we hear from each other because neighbors of a project or people who live down the street or people who serve on a committee or have particular technical expertise can offer a lot of information that helps our town make better decisions. So that part of the meeting is very important. I value everyone who comes up to offer something in the meeting. And I particularly advise you to write down what it is you want to say. So when you get to the microphone, you can use your three minutes. Well, you can speak specifically to the article only. And then you can have a seat and we will have heard from you and use your information to make decisions together. So I think I covered this a little bit. You'll have three minutes. All comments directly focused on the article under consideration will be heard. Outside comments will not be tolerated. I will cut you off and ask you to sit down if you're, you're straying or trying to get the town meeting to address other issues. And we will not allow people to make comments about personality or disparaging remarks about anyone. I do ask that you listen carefully to the speakers because then you won't repeat what was already said. And then voters can address the meeting. Non-voters need to request to address the meeting to the moderator and I will ask for a vote if people, if I feel that that is useful. So no profanity, no raucous behavior. Again, it's the sit down, please be quiet, listen and participate when the time is right. Once the discussion has concluded, I will call for a vote on the motion. Or if people feel that the discussion should end and there's still a line of 20 people and it's, you know, 10 o'clock at night and we've been talking about the same issue and folks feel like we've heard it all, it's time to move the question. Someone can get up without making any other comment. You're not allowed to both comment and move the question. But you can get up and say, I'd like to move the question and to end debate. So we would then take up that motion to move the question. We would get a second and we would have to vote on ending debate. It takes two-thirds of all the town meeting members present to agree to end debate. One motion is taken up at a time. Electronic clickers are used. And please follow my instructions at all time. My job is to keep us moving forward and to worry about the details. There are a couple of terms that get referred to often and these are, you know, times when someone can interrupt the meeting. One being a point of order. Point of order can only question three things. If someone is speaking and you feel that that person is not a town resident or a non-voter or they are overstaying their three-minute time period and have continued to talk, you can interrupt them. you can interrupt them with a point of order. If the speaker is saying something illegal or proposing an illegal activity or something that is completely irrelevant, typically the moderator will stop that. But if for some reason, you know, we're asleep at the wheel, which we don't expect to be, that can, that is a cause for a point of order. And if the action proposed in the meeting is irrelevant, illegal, or against our meeting procedures, you can come to the microphone and say, I rise to a point of order. At which point the moderator would say, please state your point of order, and you can explain exactly what it is you're objecting to. And then I will decide if your objection is, um, appropriate or not, and we will continue the meeting. The other interruption is a question of privilege. Privilege is your right as a voter to participate in this meeting safely with dignity, integrity, and good conduct. So most frequently, a question of privilege is if you can't hear what's going on. And that can be that the microphones aren't working right, or speakers aren't speaking directly into the microphone, and you can't hear what they're saying. If you can't hear what people are saying, you have lost your privilege to participate in the meeting, and you can do two things. You can yell louder, please, from the audience. And then we can quickly alert the speakers to talk directly into the microphone. Or if technology's not working, you can rise to the question of privilege. You can either come to the microphone or stand up and declare, I rise to the question of privilege. I will call on you and state, say, please state your question of privilege, and you might say, we can't hear you in the back. We'll stop the meeting and we will resolve the issue. So I encourage you all to come. Special Town Meeting, November fifteenth, seven o'clock at the middle school. If you're not there, we are making decisions without you, so I hope you can come. And I'm gonna open up the meeting for questions right now and then invite Andrew to walk us through the warrant for the upcoming meeting so that you have a preview, which is available also on the website of the questions that we will be addressing at the meeting on the fifteenth. And you have an opportunity to ask questions to clarify. We will not be providing information to expand on what is in the warrant or to expand on each of the articles. We will be able to clarify for you what's going to be discussed tonight, um, on the fifteenth, and to answer your questions so that you feel prepared to come to the meeting. So does anyone have questions?
Uh, I see a question here. Uh, can you clarify again what a motion can and cannot include during the annual town meeting?
Sure. So articles are the items that are written out in the warrant as the issues to be discussed. So you can think of an article with, starts with an A, is like the agenda item. So the article describes the agenda item. The motion is the action that we're proposing to take on that agenda item. And so the motions can only be made relative to the articles. We cannot accept motions that speak to other issues or that try to change the article. We can change the motion and how we vote on it. So I know it sounds confusing, and I think maybe when we get to Andrew's, um, slideshow to show some of the articles and motions that will be tackling, um, it will become clearer, but it is a point, uh, of constant vigilance for myself to make sure that we are only, you know, addressing motions that are speaking to the topic in the article. Motions can be main motions, which are to approve or dismiss, um, an idea. It can be something that is a yay or a nay, where we either approve or reject an idea, and that could be either taxes. It could be, you know, any of those other items that I listed at the annual town meeting can be approved or declined. Um, there also can be motions made during the discussion to amend a previous motion. So Andrew might make a motion to say, you know, I have a motion, we all get chocolate ice cream tonight. And then Bill seconds it because Bill really wants chocolate ice cream tonight, and chocolate ice cream was on the agenda. And so we start talking about the benefits of chocolate ice cream, but someone steps in and says, I'd like to amend the motion that, you know, we, um, include other flavors and here's, you know. And so then we vote on the amendment. Do we include other flavors in our consideration? And then we go back and vote on the original motion as amended. So there are opportunities to amend the motion, but we cannot change the fact that we agreed to talk about chocolate ice cream. So there's the article, and there's the decisions to be made, and then there are opportunities to modify our language around how we're making those decisions. Does that help?